That's right. Comes out, huh? Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Santee City Council meeting. Let the record show that the regular meeting of the Santee City Council is now called to order. Let the records reflect that Mayor Minto is absent. Myself, Vice Mayor Dustin Trotter, council members Ron Hall, Laura Coball, and Rob McNellis are present. I don't want to make sure I messed that part up. So tonight, we'll have the invocation given by Pastor Zeblin Hill, Zeb, from The Rock Church. So quickly, Zeb, I'm gonna give a little bio for you, and then we'll have the Pledge Allegiance led by Dale Hanson this evening. So Zeb is a campus pastor at The Rock Church in El Cajon Campus. The campus oversight for the multi-site campuses has been there for 11 years. Got his degree at the University of Phoenix and Bachelor of Science in Business Management with honors. Zeb has a passion for the community outreach and spiritual growth. Is dedicated, the past decade of his life, serving as a minister, offering guidance, support, and encouragement to individuals seeking faith-based connections and personal life transformation. His background reflects a steadfast commitment to fostering a sense of belonging and purpose within diverse communities. Zeblin, will you lead us in the invocation, sir?
Thank you, council members and everyone in attendance. Before I pray, I feel like the Lord wanted me to just declare something over the city. I felt like he was saying that it's a new city that he's building, not only naturally but spiritually. I feel like he's gonna restore and rebuild some areas of his community, and he's gonna use all of us, all of you, to do that. And so, I do declare restoration in the cities for those that it may be run down or tore down. I feel like the Lord is gonna build that up. So God, I just thank you. Thank you for this city of Santee. Thank you for the council here, God. Thank you for everyone in attendance, and we thank you that you are doing a new thing and you are creating a new city in Santee. And so I thank you for the freshness, the life that's gonna be poured out and built up over this 2024 year. Thank you for everyone, all the leaders in this room, and I pray that we would all lock arms to be the light in this city for those that need hope. So we thank you and we praise you for this meeting and for this evening, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Up to the lectern, Dale. Come on. Okay, please put your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so the next item we're gonna do is recognition, certificates of recognition for lifesaves and actions. As you guys can see, we have a pretty full room, pretty full room here tonight, which is super cool. So I'm gonna come up front there, and I'm gonna ask, Simone, would you please come join me up front real quick? How are you? Come on up here. I told you, it's gonna be a super cool night tonight, so. You guys, I'm gonna read a little certificate here of recognition. This is for a detailed call for medical aid. So on December 15th, 2003, we had a 72-year-old male collapse at the softball field at Sportsplex USA here in Santee. The bystanders initiated CPR and delivered two shocks with an AED. The Santee Fire Department crews assumed care and placed the patient on the Lucas Mechanical CPR device, administered additional shocks, and gave advanced life support medications. During transport to the hospital, the patient regained a pulse, and his care was transferred to the emergency room staff. The initial follow-up received from the hospital staff indicated that the patient was making good progress and had a good future prognosis. The latest report was that the patient was discharged home, awake, alert, and oriented in no distress, and will be following up with his cardiologist. So yes, he was discharged home in good health. So you guys with me right now is his daughter, Simone, standing right here with me, and we're gonna do certificate recognitions for the individuals that helped to save this gentleman's life on December 15th. So what's really cool and unique about this is that sometimes we talk about these cool, fun things we get to do as council members and do these recognitions for individuals in our community and our first responders. I was actually on the engine that day doing a ride-along with our fire department. As many of you know, I do ride-alongs periodically within our city with our sheriff's department and the fire department. I was actually assigned the engine four that day, and Captain Montgomery, which is here now, he was our captain that day, and it was a pretty cool experience, and I get an opportunity here to recognize each of those individuals for their efforts. So the first one I'm gonna bring up here is Eddie Vandiver. Come on up, Eddie. So I'm only gonna read this one time, but we're gonna recognize each individual here. So the City of Santee Certificate of Recognition, the certificate is proudly presented to Eddie Vandiver. The City of Santee would like to recognize Eddie for his responding to a medical emergency at the Sportsplex, December 15th, 2023, and helping to save a life. Don't you give these to these individuals, okay? So Eddie, I'm gonna give you this microphone real quick, and I want you just to tell everybody about the AED at Sportsplex USA.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and, you know, thank you for this. I really appreciate it, and, you know, it was a big group effort from everybody there, from the senior softball players that were out there playing, to the sheriff's deputies that came out and resumed CPR, to the fire folks that came out and transported him and got him, brought him back. So we're really thankful that Sportsplex has been open for about 14 years now, going on 14 years. That'll make some of you feel very old.
Why are you looking at me?
I'm not. And 13 and a half years ago, about three or four months after we opened, those of you who might remember Captain John Sangan Bush, he went out and made a point to come introduce himself and asked if we would be open to him raising money to buy us an AED, as he likes to do running around the city, making sure that big facilities have them. And we've had, in the 14 years, we've had four times that we've used that and been successful. I can't stress enough, those groups that have a lot of people coming through like we do, we had close to 400,000 people come in the gates of the Sportsplex last year, and it's a blessing to have that. We're fortunate that we have that because when situations like this happen, we're able to administer it, and it helps. It helped in this situation, so again, thank you and thank you for this. Appreciate it.
You guys, the AED at Sportsplex, like Eddie talked about, but also the Firefighters Association donates many AEDs to local businesses here in Santee. So it's a tool that obviously helped save Dave's life that day. So a couple people I'm gonna bring up here, this is actually some of the softball members that administered an initial CPR. Daniel King? Yeah, I want everybody to stay up here. You're gonna give all these to these people, okay? You took my other two?
Yes, do you want?
Yes, please. So the next two individuals were not able to make it tonight, obviously doing a lot of people. We have to get the scheduling and try to just make this happen at the end of the day. So the next two people, David Bradford and Norm Young, they jumped in there with Dan and made it happen, right? So I'm gonna actually just hand these to you, maybe you can make sure they get them. At the end. So the next two people I'm bringing up here are the very first responders that made contact there. So Deputy Rudy Chavaria, can I say this right? Chavaria? All right, come on up here, buddy. And Deputy Crystal Corona. You guys, Crystal and I, I've actually done a ride-along with Crystal before and seen what an amazing deputy she is being on patrol here in the City of Santee. So we're super blessed, and these two obviously jumped in there as soon as they got there, they administered CPR, and just kinda went right into their instincts and their trainings and stuff, which I'll talk about some of these other guys in a minute of what the things that they did. So Captain Montgomery, Trevon Montgomery, Captain Montgomery. Stay up here. Anyway, we're probably gonna have to split this side, actually. Captain, Captain, you probably wanna go on this side. We're gonna split this. So you guys, these three individuals are the ones that I was on the engine with. Captain Montgomery, firefighter, paramedic Prince, and engineer Wilson. They're the ones that got us to that incident quickly and in a timely manner that we got there and administered CPR. Captain Montgomery and firefighter Prince, they're the ones that picked up the CPR, got the Lucas machine onto the individual, the IV and everything else, the two that really jumped in there and got that machine pumping, that Lucas machine. If you've ever seen it, it's quite an amazing piece of equipment you guys got right there to work with. So. Next, firefighter, paramedic Mark Barry was on the ambulance that day. He's actually not here today, you guys, he's out of town, so we're gonna make sure he gets that. So go ahead and sit down there, I guess. And last but not least, firefighter, paramedic Corbin Marion. Like I said, Mark and Corbin were actually on the ambulance that came right after, and we had to do the transport in the ambulance, and Captain Montgomery and firefighter Prince went in the ambulance with Corbin and Mark to the hospital, to Grossmont Hospital, and Curtis and I had to stay there and clean up the mess and go meet them, you know, as soon as we could. But those four individuals all went in the ambulance and they're the ones that continued to administer the medical aid and got his pulse back going in that ambulance and handed them off over to the hospital team over there, right? So, would you like to bring your dad up here?
Dad, would you like to come up here?
So you guys, we had the pleasure to show you. Hold that. So you guys, this is Dave. This is the individual that all these individuals saved that day, saved his life, and he's standing here in front of us right now. I'm sure Simone might wanna say one or two things where she tears up anymore over here, right?
Okay, I just wanna say, it's even more special to me because I actually work in the cardiac cath lab. So I get these patients all the time, and it's different when you're on the other side of it. And I also know how, not complacent, but monotonous the job can get, and you know, you see so many people all the time, and the stories that are behind these people and their family, and it was on his granddaughter's first birthday, which was even harder. So, and her middle name is June, after David June, so that would've been a terrible, terrible day for him to not make it. So thank you, guys, all for your hard work. Thank you, Eddie, for having an AED at the Sportsplex. Thank you for putting on this awesome ceremony, and we're all just so lucky to have him. As you guys know, anyone who plays softball with my dad in this room, raise your hand. Golf, bowling, all of it. He's a very popular guy, so thank you all. Thank you for coming.
So you guys, just in wrapping, I wanted to recognize each of these individuals for their obviously efforts to save this gentleman's life that day, but it's a true testament to their training and what they go through to become first responders, be in the law enforcement or in the EMS or firefighting profession, that they knew what to do, how to do it, and made it happen where we got to save this gentleman's life that day. So Dave, thank you, sir.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good to go. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Dave. It's gonna take a minute, you guys, to let the room clear out a little bit. All right, you guys, ready? All right. The next items are consent calendar. Are there any items to be added, deleted, or reordered on the agenda? Councilmember Hall?
No.
Councilmember Coball?
No.
Councilmember McNellis?
No, Vice Mayor Trotter, there is nothing for me.
City manager?
No, sir.
City attorney?
Yes, sir.
City clerk?
Yes, sir, I have two items, one and two speakers on each, one speaker on each, I'm
Okay, do you have a motion to approve the consent calendar minus items one and two?
Is it one and two or three or four?
Oh, second. I'm sorry, the speaker's on one and two?
So it's three and four that's.
Yes, so three and four.
Three and four.
Three and four.
The remainder of the consent calendar.
Did you motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, you guys please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Clerk, can you please call item one?
Item number one, approval of reading by title only and waiver of reading in full of ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. First speaker I have is Truth.
Hi there. Wait a minute, it wasn't the reading the title, Dustin's job, I'm pretty sure. But, you know, I think I found a loophole in this item. I dug real deep. It's a very long item, it's like one page. It says, "This waiver streamlines the procedure for adopting the ordinances on tonight's agenda, if any. So if there aren't any ordinances, then does that mean that a waiver still needs to be passed? This might be redundant. That's something to think about." Thank you.
The next item.
Motion to approve item number one?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, can please vote?
Motion carries unanimously.
Clerk, can you please call item two?
Item two, approval of payment of demands as presented. The speaker I have is Truth.
Thank you for reading that title so clearly. Consultants, Ecologic Inc., Eben Moser and Skaggs, Hinter Leider de Yamas, ICF Jones and Stoke, and London Motor, total $33,600, give or take. Fun fact, though, for everyone, so they can know, cities usually employ consultants in order to save money and/or free up staff and/or to retain services of a group more qualified for the job. SDG&E gouged about $9,000 just off City Hall. Don't you guys wanna get rid of them? It was interesting to learn that there's an Afghan Community Cultural Center, I didn't know that, and I saw, just because, who doesn't like a free shout-out? Heather's name was in there, congratulations. I saw you had to charge for $115. She had to go to a conference. Dustin, how did he get to this point of Vice Mayor? This is the answer. He got some training from Kruegers for $700, and he's moving on up, he's almost mayor, he can even read the proclamations very clearly without stumbling, he knows what city he lives in, isn't complaining, it's very impressive so far. The county vector control got $587, and I'm wondering if there were rats here, because did anyone from the West visit? Is that what happened? I'm just kidding, that's it, thank you.
Motion to approve item number two?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, you guys please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
That brings us to a non-agenda public comment.
Yes, sir, we have three speakers.
Okay, can you please call the first speaker?
Yes, first speaker I have is Ned Leonard. A reminder to everybody, you have three minutes.
Good evening, I'm Ned Leonard. I'm here representing Sal's Barber Shop just down the road here at Mastah Magnolia. We're in the Smart and Final Shopping Center, and behind me with the white name tags, there are several other businesses that were able to come after long days of working and be here as well, and my wife Helen, who you heard from a little while back on a similar issue. The issue is, it's kind of an ongoing problem that, like the weeds that are sprouting up after the rains recently, if you don't take care of it now, it's gonna get worse and it's gonna have a huge impact on our city quality of life, and the businesses are gonna start abandoning the shopping center. That's what I'm afraid is gonna happen. Helen and I both live here somewhere, the shop owners live in Santee, so this is our home and our livelihood, and if it starts to decline, like a lot of cities have declined, our neighborhoods in San Diego have declined, East Village, I drive through that sometimes, and we don't wanna go there. Santee's not like that. Well, specifically, you probably heard, Friday afternoon, we had another incident with, looked like teenagers, probably from Santana High School, that come over right after school's out, they loiter, some are good kids waiting for their parents to pick them up, and then others are mixed in that are up to no good. They're smoking dope, they're selling dope, they're vaping, which is illegal for that age group, and they're, this time it was a knife fight, Friday afternoon, about 3:30 it went down, right in front of our plate glass windows. Luckily, none of our equipment was injured and hurt, and neither was, they didn't come into the shop this time. But they traveled around and ended up over by, I think, Del Taco where the knife was pulled out, somebody got hurt this time. So it's starting to accelerate and get worse, and that's why I'm concerned, and that's why I'm here tonight. This has been coming, building up quickly as a sort of a curve, and it's the wrong kind of curve, it's going, escalating. And this kind of violence is gonna get worse, and I'm afraid next time it could be a gun. And like I said, we've witnessed what appears to be drug sales coming out of a vehicle over there. An older guy drives up with a Buick and starts selling. I've taken pictures over to the school and brought it to the principal's attention, and I had a little headway there, I think he was able to identify a couple of the kids involved. And the sheriff's department, I would like to thank them, most of them left already, but they've stepped up patrols in the last few days since this knifing incident, but I'm afraid it's temporary, because the last time we had a big issue, they came into the shops and caused problems. There was an.
Thank you, Ned. Appreciate it. I said three minutes, there, yeah.
Can I jump in real quick?
Captain, Lieutenant, we have his contact information for his business, right? And obviously, the law enforcement's aware of the, so they're on top of it.
Sean, can I make a comment on that? Ned, just so you know, I contacted Jim Kelly of the Grossmont Union High School District, and he's contacting the superintendent. We're taking it to higher level at this point. Sheriff's Department is obviously aware of it, and so we're working on it.
Thank you, Ned.
Next speaker I have is Adam Paul.
Seamus, councilman, how you guys doing tonight? Hope you're well. Pretty much the same thing, longtime resident here in Santee, been here pretty much my whole life, know a ton of people. My friend Brett Mutaw spoke on this the last time. I frequent Sal's Barber Shop every couple months, and obviously that center, pretty much every week, go get Del Taco and whatnot. You know, I don't, like you say, you've obviously contacted Mr. Kelly at the Grossmont Union District, so that's really good, and I see the sheriffs in there, but, you know, something needs to be done, because like he said, you know, afraid that somebody who's not involved might get attacked, you know, might get hurt next time. That video that was making the rounds on Friday was really bad, and I mean bad, if you've not seen it. Like I said, I, you know, talking to the schools, something's obviously gotta be done. And I applaud you guys making all the efforts, and I just hope that everyone sticks on top of it, because these people, they don't deserve that. They're trying to make a living here, just like everybody else. That's pretty much all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
I'm actually only back here because, one, I'm hoping this meeting's gonna be short, and, two, with all the skipped presentations last time, I'm concerned that you guys are becoming lazy, or I've influenced everyone to have way too much fun. But tonight, I have a PSA on the dangers of electric vehicles and lithium batteries. This is part of a YouTube video done by the South Metro Fire Rescue out of Colorado.
The smoke that's coming off of an electric vehicle is very toxic. The hazardous materials team responded with a specialized electric vehicle fire blanket, which is used to smother the fire. Those blankets cost anywhere between $3,000 and $5,000 and weighs 62 pounds. It takes at least four personnel to put it on the vehicle. They're using respiratory protection while they're doing that, making sure that their airways are protected from that toxin. Once the vehicles are at the salvage yard, they remain underneath that electric fire blanket, which is limiting the oxygen flow to the battery, which is still smoldering. Some people might be wondering why we don't just use water on that, like a normal vehicle fire, a combustion engine fire, and it's because it's ineffective. It's very difficult to get the water where it needs to go into the battery pack, and when those lithium ion batteries are in a thermal runaway situation, it can take tens of thousands of gallons of water to extinguish them. Even in that case, if it does extinguish them, now we've created a bigger hazardous materials incident with the runoff water. There's also a risk that even after water has been applied and successfully suppressed the fire in that moment, that those batteries will reignite later, this emerging hazard, not only with electric vehicles, but electric mobility devices that have lithium ion batteries, and then certainly all of the small devices that many of us are carrying in our pockets. We recommend that people stay home when they are charging those devices.
Bet nobody knew that. Justin, does the Santee Fire Department, who's not here, will have, will they have a whole bunch of one-time-use $5,000 fire blankets, because if not, then every single lithium battery fire will emit toxic fumes, and again, every single time itself reignites. Electric cars, buses, scooters, and bikes pose one of the biggest fire risks of this era, and the reality is that the so-called green agenda is actually harming the environment and putting people's lives in danger. But lastly, for laughs, I got this from Joel, he's a great comedian, it's out of context, but you're gonna appreciate it.
This governor's done a lot of good things. I also would be remiss if I didn't do a shout-out to Nathan Fletcher. When Nathan got on this board, there was a fundamental change, and I was eager to get elected to this board to be his wingman, because I shared his vision. I would increase taxes if I thought I'd get a better outcome. And I look back to my years in the state legislature, and just in the last 15 years, our state budget more than tripled, and yet our. And yet, our roads aren't improved, our schools aren't fully funded, and mental health has not been addressed. For 12 straight years, I was up there, and perhaps I was part of the problem.
Final speaker I have is Dan Bigford.
Stabbing at Del Taco, not unpredicted. We've known that problem for years. Years, not just six months ago, not just a few council meetings ago, when we had a very tearful business owner up here pleading for something. We failed them. Every one of us, staff, council, mayor, failed them. What's next? It's not just enough to say, well, our sheriff's captain knows. What are you going to do today to stop this? Thank you.
No further speakers, sir.
All right, next, continue business, number five. Clerk, can you read the item, please?
Cannabis workshop related to manufacturing uses and retail locations in neighborhood commercial zones, and clarification about the draft application process for retail business licenses. Sandy?
So you guys, hold on. Before we hear the item, I actually need to recuse myself from this item for the manufacturing portion of the item, as I have real property lease in industrial park here in the city of Santee. So I need to appoint Councilman McNellis to run this portion of the meeting in my absence.
Can we hear the report?
Good evening. By way of background, just, hold on, I have to remember. I'm doing this myself. So by way of background, in March of 2021, city council directed staff to adopt a cannabis ordinance. In August of 2022, city council did adopt ordinance 602, and at that time, that permitted up to four retail locations. There was no limitation on testing labs or microbusinesses that did not contain a retail component, but all other types of permits were prohibited. In November of 2022, city council directed staff to develop an application process for those retail locations. And in December of 2023, staff presented a draft application process, and city council requested a workshop on two facets of the process. So first, the question was, should standalone cannabis manufacturing uses be allowed? Manufacturing uses, as I mentioned, were allowed in the ordinance, but only as a component of microbusinesses. Attached to the staff report, there was option one, which shows what it would take in the ordinance through track changes in order to enable standalone manufacturing. I will say that staff does not have a recommendation whether or not to allow standalone manufacturing uses. However, if directed to include in the ordinance, staff recommends that we not allow manufacturing of volatile materials, and that's consistent with what other cities, both in the county and within the state, have done. And due to the conflict, it'd probably be appropriate for the council now to address this specific issue, and then I can present the other item when the Vice Mayor returns.
Before we do that, do we have any speakers that we want to hear just on this specific part?
Yes, sir, we have one speaker for manufacturing uses. Cameron Pittman.
Hello. I just wanted to maybe clarify a little bit around, like, some of the legalities around products that are created. So when we're talking about manufacturing, we're talking about manufacturing cannabis products. And there are an array of manufactured products that you can run with. Through the state license, once you have a local license, with distribution alone, you can package flower, you can roll flower, pre-rolls, or you can jar it. You don't need a manufacturing license in order to do that.
I'm naive. What are you talking about, flower?
So just the bud, the actual cannabis, you know, it hasn't been.
Flower to me, bakes.
Yeah, it hasn't been. It hasn't been. It hasn't been ran through any sort of process. And so now, we talk about gummies, or vape pens, or lotions, creams, pills. Those are all different types of manufactured products. So when we're looking at these manufactured products, when we're specifically talking about volatile substances, or, you know, it is when you use butane or an ethanol-based product to process this thing, right? So you, that, it won't limit, if that's what we're looking for, any sort of vape pen production, because there are other methods of being able to produce vapes or produce wax without using ethanol, without using these volatile substances. So that's kind of just what I kind of want to clarify, that there, you can still make gummies without, even if you deny the volatile, you can still make creams, certain types of creams, even if you deny the volatile. Specifically, you're looking at certain types of vape pens and certain type of concentrate that would be processed using this butane ethanol sort of method. Hopefully, that helps clarify a little bit around that, just in case you needed that. Thanks.
Any other speakers on that part?
I have one speaker for the item as a whole, and then the rest will be the retail.
Do we want to hear that, or do we want to discuss this first?
Discuss this.
Okay.
So Justin can come back, right?
Well, we don't know if the speaker is on the manufacturing part or on the item as a whole.
If I may, whoever wishes to speak on manufacturing, this is the time to do it. And if you don't speak at this point in time, council's going to deliberate, give direction. We're going to close that portion of the discussion. So if you want to talk about manufacturing, and you've put in a speaker slip, now's the time to do it.
Seeing nobody jumped to the lectern there, I guess we are good to discuss it amongst ourselves here. Council members?
I have a question. The volatile material, what is the concern around it? Is it the butane?
Exploding.
I mean.
Correct. It's about explosions and being able to control it. So it's specifically about type seven. It's not about limiting distribution of anything else or creation. It's just more about creating a hazard.
It gets used quite often in the black markets. People do it in their houses, in their garage, and end up blowing up houses and garages using butane to extract the oils out of the cannabis.
Okay, well, I agree with the staff recommendation, then, for.
I agree with that wholeheartedly, yeah. Councilmember Hall? Okay. So that's, I'm sorry, that was your motion, then?
Yes, so we should allow standalone cannabis manufacturing with the staff recommendation.
Not allowing.
Not allowing volatile materials.
And I'll second that motion. Let's vote. We all voted?
It's just because I can't do the abstinent.
Oh, my goodness.
Motion carries with three i's.
Thank you.
Councilmember Trotter recuse on this portion.
Can we bring Vice Mayor Trotter back into the room so we can get the rest of this discussed?
And just as he's coming back, just to be clear, we're obviously, we'll bring the ordinance back to you, so it'll come back in its final form. But we have that direction, that direction's fixed. So then, Councilmember, or, sorry, Vice Mayor Trotter can return, and we're not going to talk about that issue anymore.
We're going to talk about the second one. All purpose or bread. All right.
All right, so now, back to the meeting. So can we call the remainder of that item, please?
Yes.
Hear the.
So second question is whether or not retail location should be allowed in neighborhood commercial zone districts. And the ordinance, as it's written now, it's only allowed in light industrial and general commercial. The definition of a neighborhood commercial zone is that it's intended to provide areas for immediate day-to-day convenience shopping and services for the residents of the immediate neighborhood. Many neighborhood commercial parcels are within sensitive use buffers, whether or not that's the city's 900-feet buffer, or whether or not it's the state's 600-foot buffer. So as an attachment to the staff report, we did provide option two, which shows you what the changes would be in the ordinance if you wanted to allow retail locations in neighborhood commercial zones. There might be additional CEQA review required based off of that determination, have to be decided after this meeting, and it would move forward if that was directed by city council. But when we looked at the neighborhood commercial zoned parcels, and we applied the buffers that are required, there are only two remaining parcels outside of the existing buffers. So here are the two parcels. As we mentioned, the NC R14 parcel is Lantern Crest, and the NC parcel that's on the right-hand side is a liquor store and the Eagles. So that actually would be the conclusion of my discussion about neighborhood commercial. I can go to next steps. Do you want me to do next steps? Okay.
Sandy, can you, you said the liquor store and Eagles. Can you say what intersection that is?
Sure, so it's, can you see my, I don't know if you can see my screen, but there's Woodside, that's, oh, yeah, you can see my arrow. And then right there, you've got Shadow Hill Road.
I just want to put it for the record. It's the corner in both sides of Shadow Hill with, and Woodside, the intersection there.
Yes, right here. This is the entire parcel. Yes.
Can I ask what the two buffering zones are?
So let me go back to this screen so you can see them. So again, the buffer zones are, I'm going to show that. Can you see right here in this sort of center, right-hand side of the map? That's the state buffer zone for a sensitive use of the Lakeside Park, and that's 600.
I believe Councilman Hall is referring to the parcel at Woodside and Shadow Hill, the two buffers that are down there.
Oh, okay, this one is our city sensitive use buffer, which is 900 feet.
Did you want to know, like, what, is it a park? Is it a daycare?
There's a daycare center over there.
Like that?
Okay, that was, yeah.
Yeah, there's a daycare center.
That's what I thought he was going to say. And what about the two that are just to the west and east, south? Those two.
These two NCs, I'd have to check our map. Do you mean the name of it?
The name of it, yes.
I could get the name of it for you, yeah.
That's right. So the one immediately to the east, the southeast, is Shadow Hill Park. And then the one across the highway, I don't know, what are the buffer zones there?
Is he talking about this?
Yeah, and that's. What did you mean when you said Lantern Crest?
The senior facility.
I mean, that, I guess I'd need to go back to that little drawing.
Which one? This one?
There's a, there is a slide on that.
Is it?
This one?
Yeah. So what's, where's Lantern Crest?
This is like all Lantern Crest.
Are you saying that the retail shop could be, the retail shop could be allowed on Lantern Crest?
We're saying that if we were to change the ordinance to allow for retail locations in neighborhood commercial zoned parcels, I wanted to find any parcels that were outside of the sensitive use buffers. And so the two parcels that we were able to find are these two parcels. And I wanted to let you know what they're currently being used for, so you would know.
I mean, that's weird. That's weird. When we started this whole neighborhood commercial discussion, it wasn't even about these two locations. It was about a location that I thought, really didn't, I didn't think it belonged in neighborhood commercial, but that was a whole nother discussion and not the path to go down. So it's strange to me.
Parcel, the newer building, I think it's the ridge, it's neighborhood commercial R14. That's the actual zoning.
Correct. It's split zoned.
Yeah, slash R14.
And we also noted in the December workshop that the city sensitive use buffer of 900 feet is out of discretion. That was what the council decided. Should that decision be ever overruled, the buffers would obviously change, and other potential NC locations might open up. But under the existing 900-foot city and 600-foot state, these are the two parcels we're talking about.
But the, and we did discuss what this council believes, and we, and I understood that a future council, 10, 15, 20 years from now, can make a different decision. But we've gone through the process of the buffer that we have, and our environmental study.
Can I pause this for a second? Because we heard that, from Sandy, I think we need to hear the speakers before we continue in the discussion.
I don't know, maybe, hold on a sec there.
You guys don't want to hear the speakers?
Not quite yet. I mean, the whole premise behind this was there were several parcels, and this was going to actually provide maybe some solutions for other locations off of several parcels. With that in mind, I thought maybe it would be worth the staff time to rewrite this, because there's going to be more work that has to be done with the zoning in order for this to even happen in the future as part of this ordinance. With it being literally just now, this one parcel, I don't know that it's worth the time, staff time, to even deal with this at this point. So I don't, I don't know. Is that where you were going as well? So this may be, let's make, perhaps this is a moot point. If we're kind of in consensus there, we got at least three so far, that kind of shaking heads that.
Sean, we have speaker slips on the table here. We need to hear from the.
We do, I just want to make sure.
Unless they declined to speak, right?
Yes, understood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I just want everybody to hear. I think where we're going is probably to remove this section and just move forward with what the original ordinance had stated. Does that sound about right? Okay. For me, for me as well.
Call the speakers.
First speaker I have is Truth.
Sounds a little bit like the public comment is moot at this point. Oh, man. I'm not, I'm going to keep my mouth shut. Okay, one, let's see, I wrote one. I'm supposed to say this part first, because I wrote it. It shouldn't be any surprise to anybody that I'm the one who was stuck in the middle on the items being separated. I don't know, I don't know what I wrote about. I don't know what I'm going to speak about, manufacturing or whatever this is about. I don't even know, because it's all moot anyways. And let's see, I wanted to thank Pittman, because your explanation was very good, because I'm actually worse than Laura on this topic. I'm, I live a straight edge lifestyle. And for those who don't know that, that's no smoking, no drinking, no drugs. Proud of it. Although, it does, usually, straight edge means you listen to hardcore punk, which is okay, but I like to know the lyrics. Okay, I'm curious, how did you guys come up with a number of four cannabis businesses? I don't really know. I like that the city has a reservation of rights, kind of like stores with a sign that says, "We refuse, we reserve the right to refuse service." I'm curious how the criminal background check will detect and prevent political criminals, like the cannabis cardenas who funneled money to many political campaigns. How come the area around the Sheriff's Department is not zoned for cannabis businesses? Because that would get rid of Ron's ALPR dreams. Plus, there's already 24-hour cameras required. Here's a fun joke. Is it possible to increase the 600, 900-foot buffer zone to cover the distance of the whole city? That's an option, you know? Maybe a future council will consider that. And the mosquitoes, the high-frequency devices to deter vandals and loiters, I don't think that's going to deter anybody, especially not burglars. that's going to deter anybody, especially not burglars, they're still going to break in. They're just going to bust whatever that device is. And I think it's strange that a cannabis business can't even show on its sign what kind of business it actually is or what they even sell. What's, what's the point of having the business if you can't advertise it? And the community benefit aspect, you know, that's great if they want to voluntarily give, but if it's not voluntary, if it's a requirement, then you're, they're basically paying tribute to do business. They already get taxed a lot, to the point that I don't even see how it's, how it's possible to have one of these businesses in function, because the, the taxes are in, it permits are like in the tens and tens of thousands. I don't know how any of them stay open. Must be a lot of addicts or something. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Next speaker I have is Dan Bickford.
I'll wait for my time.
Next speaker I have is Matthew Jones.
My name is Matthew Jones, and I'm here on behalf of Off the Charts to learn more about the commercial cannabis application process in Santee. Our hope is that the city enacts a just process that is deferential to operators with proven cannabis industry experience, exemplary ownership qualifications, and a record of compliance with local and state agencies. We also hope that the city will take into account local ties to the community, given our business operations and experience in San Diego County over the last five years. We look forward to the city's official announcement of an application process and the potential of being substantial contributors to Sante's business community. Thank you.
The next speaker, I'm trying to read the writing, it's Devin Julian.
Good evening, Council, staff, and community. Devin Julian with Culture Cannabis Club, appreciate your time this evening. I came today to speak on the neighborhood commercial item specifically due to a property that I thought had zoned, and based on the current map that was shown recently, it looks like it does, but staff is saying that there's only two parcels that do, and not specifically the 11541 Woodside Ave property, which we've been working on, getting approved or getting a nod from the city on whether it is approved or not. My comments may be moot based on staff's presentation, or I would ask that perhaps that's double-checked to make sure that that's the case, but my comments are that at the last meeting, it was spoken about saying just change the zoning of that property specifically to general commercial. I just wanted to remind the council that to change the zone of a property takes a vote of the people because of Prop N, I believe, in 2020, and we've been working through staff with that option. I do believe that it is part, consistent with the neighborhood commercial designation of day-to-day transaction uses, especially for those medical customers, of which we do have several that come in every day or every other day, similar to what they would do in other neighborhood commercial businesses, such as grocery stores, liquor stores, and tobacco shops. And you are all, you are maintaining all the buffer zones throughout the city, so there's no concerns with going against what the buffer zones in the city are. So those were my reasons for wanting to ask for your support for adding neighborhood commercial. The final one was that there's already going to be a potential amendment to the ordinance as you gave direction to staff on the manufacturing, so this wouldn't delay or alter the process since both of those would, could be presented to the council at a future meeting to be considered after the process. So in conclusion, I would just ask that perhaps staff can take a look at that parcel again, the 11541 Woodside Avenue, and see if it qualifies, because based on our analysis, it does. Secondly, ask for support in at least considering the neighborhood commercial amendment to the ordinance, since you already are considering an amendment to that ordinance, it doesn't slow things down. And then lastly, I just want to say thank you. I'm born and raised here in San Diego, in Santee, went to West Hills, class of '05. Want to say thank you to staff for being so helpful, and to the council for being careful and calculated as you consider a cannabis ordinance here in my hometown where my parents still live. My four-week-old baby is up with my parents right now as I drove down from my home and, and hanging out with my three-and-a-half-year-old, so it's very important to me that this is done right, it's done safely, and Culture Cannabis Club is looking forward to being part of the, of the business community, whether it's at this location or others. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Cameron Pittman.
I didn't have anything on the commercial neighborhood. Should I wait, or is this all right, the time to do that now?
No, we're calling for all of them.
Okay, cool. So I just want to pull this up real quick. You are talking about clarification.
Cameron, just to clarify, you can talk about anything on this item cannabis-related other than manufacturing?
Yeah, yeah. No, I don't, yeah, I don't, I'm not trying to talk about that.
Yep. You can talk about anything related to it.
So we have a clarification about draft procedures. We talked about clarifying that the merit-based system and whether or not some of these points are weighted, is there a rubric? How are we going to decide, is it, is it all or nothing in terms of these points? It's not very clear there, I don't believe, in the application process around that. It just says this is the amount of points you will be awarded for each of these categories. Again, is it all or nothing? Could I earn 300 of that? Or, you know, is it 450? So I would just maybe clarify around that. Otherwise, it might be some arbitrary, oh, I want to put 200 down for this one, and 300 down for this one, and 450 for this one, even if they all maintain and have the same things around them. So, so that would be one thing I, I think that we should look at. Also, when it, when, when it says that we're coming back to the council as the final process, it doesn't specify whether that is a unanimous vote, whether that's two-thirds vote. If one person says no, does that mean it, it doesn't happen? I think there should probably be some clarification around that, just so that way, as they're going through the process, it's a little more clear. When we talk about parking, parking requirements, I, I think that's important, that's something I brought, I continuously bring up. I would also, you know, look at public transportation within that area. Somebody mentioned previously, the whole reason we even have this ordinance is because it was built on the backbone of medical patients, people who, who need this in order to survive or have a better quality of life, and a lot of those patients use public transportation. And so if we are concerned or trying to keep those people in mind, not only parking should be a part of that criteria, but I also think access or closeness to some sort of public transportation should, should be something that's included within that, that topic. Thank you.
I have a question on that.
Yeah.
Do you guys do deliveries out of your businesses, or?
So I, I particularly do not have a cannabis retail or any sort of license like that. I, I represent brands, so I, I work with manufacturers ideally to bring their products to the retailers.
So we have, MTSS has two bus routes. One goes from Trolley Square up to basically West Hills and back, the other goes from Trolley Square up to here, just below here, and then back. So there are no bus routes that I know of that go over that area at all, and where we were talking about. So those were, there's really hard to.
Well, I, I, and I think we're talking about all, you know, now there's, there's multiple locations, right? Not just the neighborhood locations. I don't know if any of those other.
Yeah, the, the ordinance allows general commercial, light industrial, and within, throughout the city.
Correct.
Obviously, it allows it fits within the buffer.
Yeah, and so I'm just saying, if, if we're going to pick one or the other, if, if there's one that's a little bit closer to some sort of public transportation stop, you know, that should be considered in, in that.
Thank you, Mr. Pittman.
Yeah.
The last speaker I have is Luis Itoarte.
That's the way I pronounce his name.
Yeah, you knew that was going to happen.
Hello, Honorable Counsel. My name is Luis Itoarte. I'm here on behalf of Wellgreens Dispensary. We're really excited and we're eagerly awaiting the launch of the cannabis program here in Sante. Our owner, operators, Besma and Sam, along with myself, have deep roots in East County. Thus, the opportunity to apply for dispensary here in Sante's, you know, holds sentimental value for us, so we're really excited. In your previous discussions, you astutely highlighted non-payment of bills as a critical issue within our industry, so we would fully support implementing some sort of credit worthiness assessment, similar to what other brands and distributors are applying to identify whether they want to work with retailers or not. Additionally, we advocate for stronger emphasis on parking within the evaluation criteria. Allocating extra points for adequate parking would, you know, mitigate neighborhood disruptions and make sure the business operates more orderly. Furthermore, I, I would urge the council to consider incentives for local ownership, supporting, you know, family-oriented, locally-rooted businesses as opposed to large external conglomerates, you know, businesses that align with our community's values, and, you know, this would bolster local economic development. Lastly, we strongly recommend against allowing multiple operators to apply for a single location. I know we discussed that last time. Given the plan to only give out four licenses, it's plausible that the top applicants might choose the same, the same property. The prime property, obviously, the property's going to have something to do with how many points they get, so that's very feasible. And, you know, this could then result in a situation where you're either forced to award a license to a less qualified applicant, which might invite litigation, or ask a higher-scoring applicant to relocate, which might be unfair, since their score, like I mentioned, is based on their, on their location. Or you could have a scenario where fourth and fifth place are tied in score and applied in the same property, and deciding who gets it might, might get a little, a little tricky and get litigious. So anyway, limiting applications to one per location would streamline the process and minimize potential legal disputes. Okay, thank you for your time.
No further speaker, sir.
Sandy, did you have anything else to add to, to the item?
I was going to mention next steps, if you would like to hear that. So if directed by City Council to make ordinance changes, which we have been now, and assuming no additional CEQA review, staff would return, oh, yeah, are we okay? Sorry. Staff will return on February 14th, 2024 for consideration. City Council would separately review the draft application process in the spring. We are already working with the Sheriff's Department to secure the memorandum of understanding for background verification services, and will be soliciting proposals for the appeals hearing officer. That concludes my presentation.
Councilman Hall, you, you were in the queue, or is that from someone earlier, or is that? Okay. You guys have anything else? Well, I'll say what, so I'm, when, when we wrote this ordinance, we, just like a few people mentioned, we were very stringent in how we did this. We exceeded the state mandates, guidelines in a lot of cases. We're very thoughtful in how we put this ordinance together here for the city of Sante, so we can protect our community. And one of the items before us tonight was the neighborhood commercial consideration. We excluded it back then, and I'm still against adding it into here. You know, we, all our reasons are well documented. Previously, we needed to go back to it, so again, I'm, when, with you guys, I, I'm not in favor of adding neighborhood commercial into the, to the zoning options.
I'm, I'm fine with that as well, at this, at this point. But I think we're, we're on track with everything else. Do we, yeah, we'll, you see the consensus that, have we given staff the direction needed to move forward?
Yes, we've, we have the direction on the, the first part, and we'll bring that back. And we have the direction on neighborhood commercial, we will table that, we will not bring that back to you.
And the rest is as, kind of as written?
Yeah, the, the, no other changes to the ordinance. Obviously, we heard some good feedback today on the procedures, we can take those into account. We're going to bring those back to you, get, get, hopefully, they'll be teed up for your approval, but again, you know, you, you can tweak them. I think we were looking for some direction, if, if you want to give it now, on that last point about.
The address?
Yeah, I mean, we have one.
I know.
You know, so it's a tough one, because, you know, I think Sandy can speak to it, but the, the idea was if we only, you know, if we, if there are fewer locations that are available, do you want to have the ability for, to see multiple applications, or two applications at least, for the same property, so you can get a range of different providers? That's the way the procedures are currently written, and then you've heard a comment today and previously that, that may create issues. We, we kind of need some direction on that, but that's something you can table until we bring the procedures back, if you don't want to weigh into it tonight.
It is a sticky wicket.
Yeah, I, I think probably maybe individually, we, or maybe at the subcommittee.
Subcommittee.
We need to talk this through a little bit more.
Yeah, I think, I, I agree with that.
Just to flesh it out, yeah.
I agree with that.
Okay, so that, we could bring back to the subcommittee sort of all of these issues, get some final direction from the subcommittee, and then bring the whole procedures back.
I would go with that, because that way you guys have a chance to hash it out.
Yeah.
The committee, the mayor will be back at that time.
My money's on Laura.
Finalize, yeah. Finalize the application process from there, so.
All right, direction given to staffs, done with that item. So new business, item number six, or called item?
Pavement maintenance workshop fiscal year 2024-25, and finding the action is not a project subject to the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. Carl?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council. Staff is here to kind of present a little bit of history on pavement management here at the city, where we've been, some of the pavement management recommendations, and, And talk a little bit about what some of our recommendations are into the future, and we're going to try and seek a little bit of more input from City Council as well on funding and maybe some future priorities council may have. So I want to talk just briefly a little bit about our pavement management program and a little bit of summary. So if council remembers, back in 2022, we gave a, a pretty lengthy presentation on the pavement management report in a workshop at that point, and council indicated they'd like to have a workshop every year. So that's why we're here again today. Couple of things we want to talk about, so funding, and pavement management, as we know, is the analysis, programming, all these things that we do to try and get maximum benefit for the money we have allocated, program, budget, and everything. In particular, two of the funding sources, Transnet and SB1, RMRA, gas tax, a lot of acronyms, road maintenance recovery account. Those funds have very specific requirements for reporting. We have to do that reporting a year in advance. We come to City Council, you may have seen those before, where we have to ask for your recommendations and approvals, we report on them. Then the following year, we start utilizing that funding. The report, what it does is, within that report, it identifies the streets that I mentioned, and it's based on a, like a payment condition and a, of a network analysis. We try to do work that's consistent in certain neighborhoods, in certain zones, in different types of strategies. Again, so we get the most bang for the buck, so we can do as much as we can with the money that's allocated. And as you know, we're always asking for more money. That's just what we do. But let's talk a little bit about the annual funding for the surfacing that we've done. The 22 report, at that time, we only had Transnet and RMRA, and projecting it out into future years, it was about $2.8 million was allocated at that time. And that was kind of the amount estimated to be, keep a current PCI of a 65. 65 is not ideal. It's less than perfect. We'd like to get to a PCI of 70. 70 is ideal, so we can get into a maintenance application process, where we're not having to reconstruct streets every year. To get to that point, we've estimated we need about $4.5 million each year for the next five years to get us to that point. We've made some great strides getting there, and I'll talk a little bit about some of that funding that council's allocated to help get us there. In the history of Sante, you know, from 2002 to 2021, when we really started working on pavement management, our first pavement manager report was actually 1998, that was when it really became a requirement for funding, but it really started taking off in, in 2002. At that time, we were averaging over those, those years from 2002 to 21, $1.5 million. To give you a feel for how much that actually got done, that was about 23 streets per year, and we have approximately 507 streets. They're not all the same, they're different sizes, but just to give you scope and feel. So with the pavement management report in 2022, City Council listened to us, and they were, we, we had some funding, and it was allocated, and we got an additional 4.13 on top of what our average funding we were getting from Transnet and RMRA, and that was from the general fund. You know, that was the first time City Council had ever had some of those surplus money and dedicated them after that pavement management report, realizing we need to do a little bit more. At the subsequent meeting during some of the paving, and ARPA money became available during COVID, and an additional $1 million was allocated, and I'll get into a little bit about what we were able to accomplish with all that additional funding. So with that, the average annual street surfacing contract for 22, when we began with all that extra funding, and 2023 was $4.7 million per year, what that allowed us to do on average was 48 streets per year, if that funding continues, just in rough numbers. So talking about the 22 through 24, general fund and ARPA funding, that $4.4 million of the total $5.15 that was allocated over those last two years, we intended to spend all of that money. However, you know, during this last contract, we still have a carryover of $710,000, and it was primarily because one of the bid items had an exorbitantly high price during that bid. We tried to negotiate with the contractor, decided, hey, it's not bid. We tried to negotiate with the contractor, decided, hey, it's not worth moving forward with that. Let's get another contract out to bid in this fiscal year, so we can, you know, keep on those plans to try and get this money spent and get these streets fixed as soon as we could. So right now, we actually have an item out for bid, and it includes two priority streets. And I'll, I'll explain those in a minute, that we're actually out to bid right now, that we're part of that original plan, that we didn't accomplish over the summer because of those bad pricing. Wouldn't call them bad, just felt inflated. So we're trying to negotiate the best deal we could get. So in fiscal year '22 through '24, 20 of the 97 streets that we did resurface in those two years, since we got all that additional funding, were done out of the total 97 streets in total. And that was, again, was just general fund and the ARPA funding. That doesn't include the traditional gas tax and, and Transnet funding. I know you guys like maps. I think this really kind of puts it in perspective, what we've accomplished since that payment management report and that first real big workshop. I know it's a lot on here, and it's hard to see, but generally, what's shown in black, that's the stuff that's traditional. That's our Transnet and gas tax, or RMRA. That's what we would have accomplished without all the additional funding that was allocated. What's in blue, pink, and, and red, that's all the additional streets. And those were primarily streets identified by City Council in workshops or at City Council meetings in those previous workshops, as priorities and things that they've identified, along with some of the staff's recommendations. So, you know, you can see, we've got a lot of stuff going on here, and there's been a lot of construction going on in Santee the last two years. And, and we've made a really big impact, I think, on improving the quality of these streets for the residents. Kind of even taking a little step further, putting it in perspective, the impact that that had, all that additional funding. It's just kind of a graph chart, and, you know, there's a lot of information here again, but just to try and demonstrate, in 2020, here's kind of the funding we spent in a breakdown. You know, you can see the colors. The total amount in green was, was what we spent. And then obviously, the biggest year we've ever had in our history, which was a tremendous workload for staff, and pretty overworked to get all that work done. And, and it was a lot of extra hours and nights and weekends and lots of things. We got up to, you know, a little over $5 million. But what's important to note is what we're kind of showing in, in red. That represents some of the funding that has been allocated, that council has thrown at projects, to help get us much greater funding in total. And for '22 and '23, that was a pretty big impact. We have a little bit of carry forward right now, but right now, we currently have no additional funding programmed in '25, '26 general fund or ARPA. We understand that, and that'll be part of, uh, some of this discussion. We're going to ask for input and recommendations from council moving forward. Again, a lot of, a lot of information, but the falling streets that we were identified as priority streets by City Council, and again, as recommended by staff, is where we've gotten a lot of complaints, and we've had a lot of issues and concerns from residents. This is what we were able to complete in those years. This is just a list of those streets, and I'll show you on a map again, break down a little bit more detail of what was accomplished with those. So it is a lot of work that's been done in all those priority streets. This is the ones that are remaining, that council has identified that were priorities. And again, I had mentioned before, what's shown here in blue, and it's Fenita Drive and Mission Gorge, these were priority streets. Right now, what we're recommending, or what we're going to come back to City Council with, with an award here in the next month or so, is an award to, a, a contract recommendation for award for doing the patching. And what that's going to allow us to do is, get that work done in the winter time. Hopefully, we can get some favorable bids, because most of the paving happens in the summer. And it'll help relieve staff of all that heavy workload in the summer with all that work, with having to work nights and weekends, primarily because Mission Gorge Road, we have to do night work. And it's hard to do night work and day work at the same time, because we're stretched with staff and having to split them up. So that was recommended by our, our paving expert down here, Toby, because he had to do a lot of those nights and weekends. And he came to me and Steve, and he said, I'd like to do this. And we said, let's do it. And we approached the manager, and she said, yeah, let's get these priorities done as fast as we could. So out of the remaining priorities that were already identified, that we've talked about, we still have Carlton Oaks, Quyamaca Street, Mission Gorge, and Prospect Avenue. Right now, there's not occurring any funding. The 710 carryover is going to be expended, is planning to be expended, and if comes in favorably, we'll complete the patching on Fenita and Mission Gorge Road. So kind of the map that we talked about, we talked about all those priority streets. Again, this is just more of a blow up of all these priority streets and the impact that all that additional funding has had. Everything in blue, those are what's been completed. What's in pink right now, Mission Gorge Road, a section kind of post office, Carlton Hills over towards Town Center Parkway, and Fenita Drive, which was also identified. Those are the ones that are going to be coming back in a month or so. And what's in red are the remaining streets in our priority list. So kind of switching gears now, that's kind of the history we've had with pavement. This is what we're talking about, kind of moving forward. So again, this doesn't mean a lot to you guys. You've seen these zone maps and things, and we've talked about them. But I just wanted to demonstrate is, these, this is a list, this, this list here, these are all the zones that were recommended in the payment management report. We've completed several of them, and we have programmed in this year to do several more. But we want to point out, within that payment management report, we try to stick to it the best we can, because that's the best bang for the buck. And council gave us some clear direction on a couple of the zones, I believe it was two years ago, was Zone FF and Zone DD and Zone FD. Zone FD is just one street on Rockville. There's a potential development. We don't want to go pave a street with a potential development there. The other two zones, one of them, DD is the Wheatlands neighborhood, heavy industrial, lots of things going on there. We kind of agree, let's get more bang for our buck on the residential's and the high-traffic streets, because the resident, you know, the industrial takes a beating on them. And Zone FF was a small little area over in an industrial over by Kenny Street, Roward Avenue over there. Same kind of feeling. And council said, hey, let's spend it, let's get our bang for our buck with that money somewhere else. So here's kind of the recommendations we have, and we call it fiscal year '24, '25, because the work actually happens in the summer, and the bills and everything come in into the next fiscal year. So that's, it, it might get a little confusing, because we talk calendar year, we talk fiscal year, those crossover. Paving happens in both, but the bulk of the expenditures happen in the next fiscal year, because we start the work in the summer. So here's kind of a list, the remainder of Zone AE, Halburn's Boulevard. We did some of that already. Remaining of Zone BG, which is primarily Second Street. Remaining of Zone EC, Maricall Lane. Again, and we waited on that one because of all the construction going on in that neighborhood at that time. I think we're confident now all that construction's done. And now, as the work goes to the, to the south, hopefully, what we all combine, we'll complete when that work is done. Zone AH, Zone BA, and I'll show you these on a map here in a minute, because it's hard to understand where they're at. Fenita Drive, again, it's Mission Gorge Road from Prospect Avenue. And again, this is the follow-up from the patching we're currently bidding, and this is going to do a, a surface treatment on top of it, part two. We found it's better to bid the contract as a whole, do a separate just asphalt contract, and then combine it with our slurry seal contract to do the final treatment, rather than one bidder. And then some crack sealing, and then Prospect Avenue from Atlas View Drive to Quyamaca Street. And again, these are primarily recommended within the payment management report, and then the follow-up with some of the priority locations that council, primarily Mission Gorge Road, completing that. So here's kind of a map showing you. Here's Zone BA, Zone AH, Zone BG, which is Second Street, Zone FI, it's kind of the northern part of Shadow Hill Park area, Prospect Avenue right here, Fenita Drive, which we're going to, like I said, we're going to do the patching right now, hopefully, CG, Mission Gorge Road, and Zone AE. So with that, that kind of concludes my presentation with this exciting subject of paving. You know, we're just kind of, right now, asking council to support and approve what the recommendations are in the payment management report, using the current annual Transnet and RMRA program funds, which are, remind you, are already programmed with the state and with Sandag. And then provide direction to staff on any priority streets you have that we can resurface, and talk about funding for future years. And I, I think it's important, timing-wise, we'll be coming with a mid-year budget, and that'll be the time to look at, if funding is available or can be allocated, we can take any priority streets that you have this fiscal year, look at that funding when it's available, and potentially come back next year with some priority streets, given the available funding, picking the streets that work with the funding that's available. And with that, that concludes our presentation. Sorry, I had to dive into my inner John O'Donnell, for those who remembered. I, I was told I needed to liven these presentations up a little bit, so I know it's a dull subject.
Any speakers, Liz, City Clerk?
Yes. One speaker, truth.
You know, don't worry, Carl. That was actually a roller coaster presentation. I was listening. Because I, it was like, okay, getting kind of boring. And then it was like, ew, Sandag, oh, you just lost me. I'm sick. I don't, I want to support this item at all anymore. And then you liven it up again, and see, it, it worked. But I got news for you. You said, you were talking about, you know, that's what we do, we look for money. But I got news for you. Every person in government does nothing but ask or demand for more and more money. So you're not alone. And the fraud emergency that resulted in all that money upended people's lives, ARPA, American Ruination Plan Act, that actually ends in December. So that's, that money's going to be gone. I hope you're not counting on it. Unless, all of a sudden, another emergency just blows in, you can declare one for anything in these days, and the money just gets funneled, and you never know where it ends up. But what I originally wrote is, I'm pretty sure this is Dustin's dreams coming to fruition. There's no flowers or anything in it. This is great. And it's, I think, I think it was $4.5 million needed every year, which, that's a crazy amount. It's not too bad. And of course, the price is going to go up with inflation. It'll be, it'll be $10 million before you know it. But just to comparison, I'm pretty sure the city of San Diego requires like billions. They, they actually had years where they put $0 to street repair. They're such fools. And their mayor made baseless, broken promises about how the streets are going to get fixed. And I won't repeat his line here. Everyone should know that stupid line he always says. My only argument to this item is, why not repairs on Mast Boulevard or Quyamaca Street? Maybe that's already in the, in the works. I don't know, because I'm not back there all the secret conspiratorial plans. No, I'm just kidding. But I think it should be. Because I look at it, and it's a disappointment. I've seen worse, though. Don't get me wrong. I've seen way worse. Like, you go to City Heights. What an embarrassment. I even heard some, there's some street closures that are happening here, too. I heard at the county for a year and a half. And I heard on the news, people were asking why. And I know, I know why here, it's for safety. I remember hearing that. But some lady asked, what are they, why, why do we need it? I don't think it's for safety. I particularly think it was Cory Road she was asking about. And she asked on TV, she said, what are they doing with all our taxes? And of course, my reaction is, man, if only she knew. I know exactly what they're doing. But anyways, the other point would be, are you guys going to get one of those companies John was describing that pave as well as they do on the East Coast? Because if not, we're just going to slip and slide on that slurry, like tends to happen on some of these streets. Anyways, I'm actually in approval. Thank you.
You have a speaker?
No further speaker, sir.
Councilman Hall?
Truth stole my, my ideas. The Mast Boulevard between Quyamac and Magnolia, I know they're putting a water line in there. Is the JPA going to cover any of that? And how much can we?
Yeah, so the reason why we're not doing Mast is because, and for the audience, for council, the, the advanced water purification problem is actually running right down Mast, and they're going to start construction here very quick. In fact, we'll be giving some announcements in the next few weeks. You've already seen some of it down towards Los Ranchitos and in the intersection of Magnolia. Again, we don't want to spend money while construction's happening on paving. So when they're done, they will be doing restorations as required in our, in our ordinances and codes and, and our, and our encroachment permits. So once they're done, then we'll look at allocating on, on Mast.
Okay. And do we, are they just, from what I understand, they're just going to go one lane, two lanes, or?
It, it, it goes one lanes, crosses a little bit, two lanes, then it switches the other side.
Right.
But again, they're going to be running equipment, excavators, loaders, lots of big, heavy equipment through. And, you know, again, I don't want to put a brand-new paving there, and then have people come to us and say, what are you guys aren't, not planning, you're letting these guys tear it up. So, you know, we try to consciously look at land development projects and future projects, and we meet with utilities regularly to try and plan these out.
Okay.
So we don't do those kinds of stuff.
So basically, what do you think they're going to be responsible for? I think that gets the question I'm looking for.
What was that again?
What, what are they going to pave when they're done? And what are we going to end up?
They're going to, they're going to pave everything they damage. It's primarily, we require them to do, if they touch a lane, they have to replace the whole lane. If they go within three feet of a curb, they have to take it to the curb.
Okay.
So we have some very stringent requirements, and we've worked really hard through the years to try and toughen up our encroachment permits and our standard drawings for how we do it. And I, in my opinion, I, we, I think we've seen some better results with some of the strategies we've been using with the trenches, and how they're holding up better than how things were done in the past. It's not perfect, but, you know, we'll, we'll be holding, holding their feet to the fire to make sure. And we, and, and, and my engineer, Steve Miller, meets with them every two weeks. We go through it with them. We're meeting with them tomorrow to talk about some of these things as well.
Okay. The other one that I was looking at is Mast Boulevard at Quyamaca. I think it might be on there, but I'm not sure. Can we go to the ones we're planning on doing or anything? Okay, that's not helpful, but I think it is on, do we have a list of the streets that we're planning on?
Um, right here?
That one, yeah. So, so, well, the other one I'm talking about is for Mast Boulevard, pretty much all the way down to Home Depot.
On Quyamaca?
Yeah, on Quyamaca. We've done the, the first half, so we need to look at maybe doing the, it's just terrible. Mission Gorge in front of the post office, obviously, is another one. Halburn's, we're doing. I was driving by there today, and just to make sure, I did some driving around to make, to make sure. Northwood Side, we're holding off on. And hopefully, when they build that warehouse where the drive-in is, maybe we can get some money for paving down that area, too. And then the, the bottom half of North Code, that's the one that I was talking about earlier with you. That's kind of, that general area there, I would like to look into, because it's, it ain't any better on the south end as, or the north end as it is the south end. So it'd be good to have those in. Other than that, I think we're, we're moving on.
Okay. So how did Mission Gorge hold up after these rains? Any?
You know, we have a little bit of mulch and debris and stuff deposited, but as far as the paving, I, from what we saw, it's fine.
Okay. I mean, I know it's a rough area between, like, the post office to, you know, and that's zone.
They're taking care of that.
Taking care of that. Good, because obviously, traffic is likely to increase even more there. One area that I'd like staff to look at is on Mission Gorge, going west. So I guess it's a little west of Meadowbrook. I think it's kind of fine, Meadowbrook, but then up to Highlands. That's pretty rough, and there's a lot of traffic that goes.
Honestly, that's been on our list, but with all the development going over there, the pier flow site, Laurel Heights, all the stuff on Maricall Lane, and we've been tapping into those streets with utilities. Again, also with the gas station, the subway.
Everything.
Everything going on. There's a lot going on. And again, as they tap into utilities and other things and do trenching, you know, we're trying to make conscious decisions to not tear those up. But that has definitely been high on our priority, and we do get a lot of complaints in that location.
Okay. Glad it's on your radar. So do I.
For me, it's just, you know, it's the neighborhoods. It's some of these neighborhood streets that still haven't been paved in 25, 30 years. Driving around the neighborhood, especially in my district, just alligators popping out of the asphalt, all over the place weeds coming out of the asphalt on the streets. You know, kids can't play football in the streets anymore. They can't ride their bikes or skateboards in the streets, because it's, wheels won't turn on them. It's, it's, uh, it's not safe. It's, you know, I, I understand the major thoroughfares. They are the major thoroughfares, and as such, need to be the, the priority. But guys, we got to continue to look at our neighborhoods as well. It's, it's pride of ownership when your, when your house is, you know, you've spent a lot of money on your home, and to make it look nice and, and, and stick up in your neighborhood, but your street is tore up from the floor up in front of you. It's just, uh, these are, these are still some of the priorities that we need to do, and there's a lot of them in my district that just haven't been touched some, almost ever. So I really would like to see us looking at that as well. So I really would like to see us looking at that as well.
Yeah, duly noted.
So I'll start there, actually, so I don't know, Toby, it would probably be easier for you to come up here with the pavement book we have here, pavement condition zones. Probably easier for you to explain to the public and us. So I actually had the same, somewhat concerned, and I'll talk about a couple of other streets here in a second. We've done an amazing job tackling some of the poor and marginal neighborhoods in the last couple of years, and obviously, extra funds hitting some of the major artillery roads and, you know, the thoroughfares that were upset. But can you give us a, I know, this is a five-year paving program, right, that we're working within, right? So that's years 23, 24, 25, 26, and 27?
Right.
Okay, so we're in 24 right now?
Yes.
Okay, so can you tell us what neighborhood zones are being done in 24, which I think, Carl, you've already mentioned in the one slide over here, right? It's not this, well, A A H, B A, and F I, those are not-- Can you go back, Carl, there was one where you had a--
Those are the zones and streets we will be resurfacing this summer.
Okay. So those are the ones completed, the one, go back one, Carl, please, right there. So this is this coming summer?
Correct.
So A A H, B A, and F I are the neighborhood zones. And then completion of the other ones, basically, because they're mostly done?
Correct.
Okay. So what about zones A B, A G, and B H? Let's start there. What year? He's going to have to tell you what neighborhoods, because they don't have a map for this available, right? I'm assuming?
That's correct.
Yeah.
It's just too hard for such a small scale to have all these zones on one big map.
Zone A B is the Medina Drive neighborhood north of Mast Boulevard.
Pebble Beach and everything north of Mast along Santee Lakes.
That area, correct. That is listed, the fourth zone, after we complete this year's program in the report.
So it would be 25?
It will likely be started in 25, based on what funding we may have, yes.
Sure, of course, understood, okay.
The next one was--
A G?
A G is-- north of Mast Boulevard, west of Carlton Hills Boulevard, Lake Hill Road, Lake Country Drive, Darrell Road. That area is set for crack fill with the current contract out this summer, so that will be third on the list, according to the report. And that's likely to be started in 2025, based on funding, of course, again.
B H?
B H is north of Mast Boulevard, Clary Street, Green Castle, Grand Fork, Los Ranchitos, Columbus, Bend Street area. Zone B H is actually the second zone that's on the list, according to the 22 report.
B?
B H.
Boy, H and Henry.
And that's the second zone, according to the pavement manager report. So that will likely also be started in 2025, again, based on funding.
Okay, so you guys, the reason why I looked at this, looking at the map, these are the poor and marginal neighborhoods within our communities. So you're identifying this second, third, and fourth coming.
After this year's--
Yeah, after this cycle, right, correct. All right, so the next three, F B?
F B is probably, it looks like there's four neighborhoods that are in advance of that one, according to our latest report.
So this is Shadow Hill, North Coat, all those neighborhoods and streets in there, yeah?
Yeah, right, right here on the map, it's kind of where I'm showing the arrow, it's this neighborhood right here.
Yes.
It's the ones I was talking about.
Yes, correct.
So I'm sorry, was that fifth in the order?
So there's, looks like--
Fourth.
Four neighborhoods that are in advance of that. So A B is the fourth in the list.
Yeah.
The zone you're talking about now is probably eight or nine.
Okay.
F G? F G is Black Horse Estates neighborhood, there's three streets in that neighborhood, and--
It was this year.
It's kind of right, right here on the map, where I'm kind of showing.
That's where we're, oh, right above where we're planning.
Just south of where we're doing this this year.
And that's also after Zone A B, the fourth one, there's four, five, or six neighborhoods that are in advance of that as well.
Okay, and the last one I have is B I.
B I is the neighborhood from Wood Park Drive, north of El Napa, south of Woodland Vista, all the way to Molino, Layerwood--
Three Oaks.
Three Oaks.
Wood Park, Wood Rose.
Yes, that neighborhood.
Yeah, it's kind of right underneath the Zone A A H on this map, right in here.
And that is probably number 10 or 11 on the list, according to the report.
Okay.
Yeah, my neighbors are going to be dead before that gets done.
All right, so the reason why I bring it up, thank you for Toby, is that I'm actually with Councilman Gonzalez, is I really want these neighborhoods to be done as much as possible with the funding that we have and the additional funding we may have. Some of the major streets are extremely important, like Mission Gorge, Quea Macca especially, and then obviously, big-time deferred streets like Prospect, Carleton Oaks, and Fenita that we have. But the neighborhoods are extremely important to our constituents here, so within the five-year program. One additional street, which Councilman Hall kind of mentioned, in your additional streets you had, Carl, you had something about Quea Macca from, I believe it's Mission Gorge to Riverview?
Yeah, Quea Macca Street from Mission Gorge Road to River Park Drive. That's where the sports plaques and all that--
Turn right there.
To the bridge, to the San Diego River.
So these four streets were previously identified as priority streets, but we have no funding for, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I see we have Quea Macca, like I said, from Mission Gorge to River Park Drive. Have we done an assessment from River Park Drive up to Mast Boulevard? Because that's really bad, going up that hill in front of the school and the school district.
We might have an older one, we can get it to you quickly, but I don't think we have it with us today, because that was one we were looking at as well.
Yeah, I would like to add that one personally, as one of the major streets. Don't know if we have the funding for it, but I appreciate the look of what we talked about, it's kind of segmenting these improvements, right? We can't do the whole entire street in one swoop, but we can do it from a major intersection to a major intersection. So that's the only major street that I have, other than the neighborhoods. And so, kind of back to the funding, can you bring that one chart up real quick, Carl, and I'll wrap up here on this? The bar graph chart?
Okay.
So you guys can see, Carl did here, going back to 2020, and council only allocated, you know, $1.1 million, and then $2.3 million. We know today that $4.5 million is the magic number that we need for the next five years. We almost got there in '22, and '23, we actually exceeded that. So we were actually overfunded a little bit in that. And so we have a little bit of surplus carrying forward right now, that $710,000.
We're still playing catch-up.
And we're still playing catch-up, we're going to be playing catch-up. But that's why I appreciate this chart showing that the next five years, you know, where we're at, '22, '23, '24, '25, of what we've already done, but we're still going to be deficient in the coming years if we don't allocate any general fund going forward in the budgets, in the coming fiscal years. So in '24, we only have a shortfall of, you know, $500,000, which, don't get me wrong, $500,000 is a lot of money, but that's a heck of a lot less than one, two and a half, four and a half million dollars that we've put forward, too. So we're--
And to your point, I mean, every time that we go deficient on that, it actually puts more cost into the future--
Yeah.
--of trying to get where we want to be. So it is, it needs to continue to be a priority for this council.
I'm wrapped up.
Are there any possible funds coming up?
Thank you for the input, and I think we'll be bringing it during the discussion, during mid-year. If there's discussion on that and funding allocated during those and in the end-of-the-year budget, for next year's budget, you know, we'll try and have, we'll have numbers readily available for you guys then, and estimates for what we think these new priorities are, so that decisions can be discussed and made and prioritize those. Because again, we got to match the funding to the strategy, to the location, and try and get the best bang for the buck with that as well.
And in that, with the Mission Gorge to Highlands area, can you estimate when the construction in that general area would be done, because--
Most of it is wrapping up, there's just one project right now that's kind of in pre-app, early application phase, the Pure Flow Water Site.
Isn't there an A W P part of that segment in there, too?
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, that's major.
Yeah.
We haven't actually seen the detailed plans, it's still in planning, Steve's working with them on it. Steve, do you want to talk to him about that?
Yeah, I actually had an email today, we're going to receive their 60% design submittal for final pipeline layout next week. So we'll take a look at that and see where the boring areas are going to be at and where the open cut trenching.
This is part of the design that goes into Mission Trails?
Yes, so where their existing pump station is adjacent to Highway 52 on ramp and 125, they're going to be taking a pipeline out of that and running west down Mission Gorge Road into the park.
And they go, from there, they go into, just the community knows, they go into the park at Old Mission Dam and go all the way down Old Mission Dam through, all the way through Mission Trails.
Yeah.
Pass to the other end of Mission Trails.
Yeah, we have a general idea, too, of where the trenching locations will be, but, you know, we want to make sure we see final designs until we commit a rebuild of Mission Gorge for the type of work that's going to be required on that area, especially west of West Hills Parkway, to get it done right.
Right.
Not only that, but just right now, the turn lane, the right turn lane to get on the 52 is so torn up with them, with them doing, you know, their construction right now, so-- I don't want to throw good money at or bad at all, but--
We agree, and we appreciate that you support that, because, you know, that would be our recommendation as well. It's not, it's not a good idea to do that, because once you cut into a street, the degradation happens quicker. We want a continuous matte, completed, finished street, you cut into it, and the trenches inherently, they're not as good as a finished paving product.
Could we ask them to fix some of those potholes they've created right in front of that sewer lift station on Mission Gorge?
If there's any potholes that are there remaining, we'll have the inspection staff tomorrow double-check on it. I do know that yesterday, their contractor did go out and start patching immediately after the storm for some of the low spots, so they are aware of it, and we'll make sure we have our eyes on it.
Carl, do you need a, you have a recommendation on-- No, I think we're good enough, as long as we got some direction moving forward and the funding will have to follow. And we'll be coming back with construction contracts. If you're okay with the rest of those neighborhoods, we're moving forward in consistent. Again, those are already programmed, and we'll be coming back to you in the next several months with next year's recommendations for Transnet and S B 1, or R M R A gas tax, because we have to start programming those as well, and we have to do an amendment to Transnet once new revenue projections come out any week now.
So what is the S B 1 funds again? Can you go back over that?
Sorry, it's confusing, it's really three acronyms.
I know, but I mean, what, dollar-wise, what were they?
Oh, the dollar amounts?
All the millions of dollars they guaranteed to give us.
Tell them the chart right there.
Yeah, right here. So there's the Transnet and R M R A, it's about $1 million a year. So, again, S B 1, it was Senate Bill 1, and we call it R M A, it's Road Maintenance Recovery Account, but it's all part of the gas tax, it's funding generated from the taxes on gas. And then again, Transnet, to clarify, is the half-cent sales tax measure that's on all sales, goes directly into transportation.
Anything else, guys? Okay, next item is non-agenda, Palmer Comment, continued.
We have one speaker, Cameron Pittman.
Just want to talk about two things. One being, since we've talked about cannabis, right, it's come up about protecting our youth and, you know, making sure we don't have access. As these businesses start to enter our community, I would like to urge you all to maybe consider other businesses that are in our community that could be just as detrimental to our youth and how we handle those businesses as well. Liquor stores, cigarettes, smoke shops. If we are going to be a community that touts that we are creating certain guidelines to protect our youth, we should do that across the board with all substances that could be detrimental. It was brought to my attention specifically because I live, you know, off of Palm Glen, and there's that liquor store that's right there, and they have about six bright yellow big flags that say, get your cigarettes here, you know, very cheap, as cheap as they get, you know, and it's catty-corner to high school. And so if we are going to carry that energy for some businesses, we should try and carry that energy for all businesses. You know, I think that's the community that we want to be, not just cherry-picking what businesses. We want to lay out a 5% community fund fee for. Why not do that for the other businesses that also sell substances that could be detrimental to our youth? The next thing I want to mention is specifically for you, baseball season is upon us, Little League is here. You've heard me talk about Santee National a lot. My kids aren't a part of that program anymore, but I am still here as an advocate that I think that somebody should just check in on them, you know, make sure that they are serving the 450 families, I think, this year that they had signed up. Check in on how they're allocating their resources. You know, I don't know how much oversight you have there, but maybe you could be an honorable, you know, mention on the board, or, you know, something like that. I know last year, they operated the entire season without a budget, you know, and I just think they're squandering the fields over there at, you know, Chet F. Harret. You know, those are all great assets in our community, and if the right organization does not value what they have there, you know, I just would encourage you to kind of just see what they have going on and see if it's up to your standards for the families that they are serving. Because for me, it didn't feel that way, you know, and they did not want to hear my voice. So maybe they will hear, you know, somebody else's voice about the organization that they have going there. Thank you.
No further speakers, sir.
Real quick, on the first subject you brought up, they were actually out of compliance. Those signs were out of compliance to begin with, so they've been removed, they were told very quickly. And, yeah, that's already something that is not supposed to be allowed, and they know now.
I think it's the day I saw one banner still up, I don't know if that's in compliance or not, but the other one's got removed. Any other speakers?
No further speakers, sir.
City Council reports, Councilman Hall? Councilwoman Cobal?
Yes, well, Ron and I attended the, it's the Sharp Grossmont Hospital. It's called Transfer of Care, it's a collaborative with Fire Chiefs, Grossmont Hospital. We show up, it's county. Anyway, the whole goal is to reduce the wait times on the wall, as they call it, when they take, when they take somebody to the hospital in an ambulance, and then you've got, you know, our staff, or Alcohoan, or whoever, waiting on the wall to get them into the emergency room. And we've been sitting on this for, I mean, they meet once a month to talk through the issues. Grossmont Hospital's been great, they've been great. But to work through the issues, to reduce that time on the wall. And we had a meeting yesterday, and they were showing, they provide us with graphs, with all the information. I'm happy to give this to the city manager to make copies for you, so you all, you can see it. Ron says she has it, so, you know, she can share it. But they were talking about the last few months, and they've just never seen numbers like this. They don't have enough beds, they've never seen numbers like this. And they couldn't tie it to flus, you know, like, everything that was coming in was all over the map. And they were just, so many more beds being used. And, you know, they can't talk about probably what the real reason is, but Ron and I looked at each other, you know. I mean, it's the border crisis, right? It's all the immigrants that, you know, if they have some kind of medical issue, then they're also-- if they have some kind of medical issue, then they're also overwhelming. And it's not, not just Grossmont Hospital. They told us it's all hospitals right now. So I just wanted to share that that is definitely happening in our community hospitals. And Ron does have a comment about that.
So to give you an idea, there's an individual that came up. We did not get his name. We did not get too much information on him, but it was coming up where every day he would dial 911, so I assume he has a phone. And he would want lunch. So they would have to take him up to the hospital. He would eat lunch and then he would, they would, he would just walk out. And it's basically been used as a taxi service. Our 911s have been used as taxi service. I don't know if you want to say anything about that, but many times they'll just end up getting the free ride up to Grossmont Hospital and turn around and walk right out.
That's, and that's a different scenario that it's known. This is a new anomaly in the last couple of months, but that's obviously another issue that they're dealing with, like this particular gentleman makes five calls a day.
That's been going on for years.
Yeah, and that's been, and this, this new one is just, you know, the beds are overwhelmed and it's a...
Grossmont's done a great job of bringing it down to 30 minutes, which is required by law. Now you have to, you have to get them out by 30 minutes. And, but, you know, but now they're saying we have so many people coming in that we can't do that anymore. We're not being able to do that. So they're, they're running into problems with that. They had 400 patients the other day and they're only equipped for like 300.
Yeah. The federal government has created an issue where our state law can't, there's no logistical way to do it now. So there you go.
You guys, I'd like to report, if you haven't seen some of the promo videos, I have a series of community coffees coming forward in this year. These are not city events. They're, literally are constituent communication that I have coming forward. The first one's coming up here next Monday, January 29th at 7:00 PM. It's at the venue next to Pathways Church. So any of the citizens that are in District 4, encourage you to come out and just come talk to us. We'll have a few friends there, some other people you can talk to about the city and just, you know, just a quick hour of coffee and with the, with our community. So it's kind of cool.
And I am happy to report that, as I said, I was the commissioner on the Heartland Fire Training Authority and their, the facility out there is just done so well now. The burn rooms, the, the different structures that have been brought out there over the years. I mean, it's been a long time coming. There are finally a number of them that are up and operational. Not only the city of Santee, but the surrounding communities, fire departments, emergency services are getting some of the best training and have, now have locations and apparatus that allow them to get the best training available in, in, in the zone that we represent. It's, it is pretty cool. I was just there for the last meeting and it was packed with, with every agency that Heartland Fire, you know, serves. And seeing everybody out there together and just learning all, you know, in all the different, it was like, it reminded me of back when we went to Pendleton one time and, you know, they were taking us to different sections and how they train the, you know, the soldiers in different, to operate under different circumstances. Having all those different abilities in one location now is really kind of a cool thing. And I think we're getting recognition throughout the state for that, for that facility. So it's a really cool thing and we're fortunate to be a part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Just two real quick items. One, I want to thank staff for their efforts on the race walk that occurred this past weekend. Had a chance to go down there and see some of our future Olympians, current and future Olympians compete. And so staff did a great job setting that up. They were very thankful and very supportive. And thank the council for supporting that activity. And then just a quick reminder for those sitting at home or here in the room, Santee Discovery Day is this week. It is January 27th at Walker Preserve. It's got a lot of opportunities to have some fun looking at what's going on on our trail systems and find out more about what you can do here in Santee. There is a video on Santee TV. You might want to pull it up. It's very cute, done by one of our recreation staff. And I just want to promo that. Come on out, catch it this weekend because we're going to get it between the rain weekends. So that's probably pretty good. So thank you very much, sir.
City Attorney?
No report.
All right, next, closed sessions, Item 7 and 8. Clerk, read the items, please.
Item 7, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9D. Name of the case, Preserve Wild Santee versus City of Santee, Case Number 37202200041478. Item 8, Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation, Government Code Section 54956.94D, D4. Number of cases, one case involving 11011 Meadow Terrace Drive.
Mr. Vice Mayor, just for the record, we'll hear these items in the reverse order and Councilmember McNellis will be recused on Item 7.
All right, ready? I let the record reflect the city council met in closed session. Um, all members were present except Mayor Minto, who was absent. Regarding item number seven, the city council received a report about the existing litigation. Councilmember McNellis recused on this item. And item number eight, by unanimous vote, the council authorized the initiation, uh, regarding the conditions at 11011 Meadow Terrace Drive. Meeting adjourned.